Isn't that ridiculous sometimes? You're like, you used to work. Tells me. Yeah, it was interesting on how they found less house. But I mean, if you're using all the data instead of just to select two.
Okay, seeing that it's six o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board to order. And we are going to start with approval of the minutes. You have the minutes in your packets? Unless there are substantial corrections, I entertain a motion and we certainly.
Unbelievable. We accept them as presented. As usual, very good.
We have a second?
A second.
Okay. Questions, comments? Any corrections? Being none, all those in favor of approving the minutes is printed?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Going to go down to board reports and Eric, since we've sat in that seat again, you're first.
Planning Board has had a couple of meetings since we last met. One expansion of a business in town that people don't know, MK Fine Cabin Tree right off exit 15 next to, they're across the street from golf courts and they're expanding, which is kind of exciting all around. But the sort of thing news out of Planning Board is the contractor we were using for the zoning rewrite and for the master planning effort is moving. So.
Just tell us where, that's the exciting part.
They're moving to New Zealand. So Rob has been working very hard to add along with the planning board to find alternative plans for that. Nothing's certain at this point. But it's also tied in with a grant that has to be completed by next July for the zoning rewrite. So there's a bit of a scramble there to figure out the logistics of you move forward. And so a lot of that. And then actually one small number that Rob started putting together some reporting for us. And so far this year, we've added 16 housing units in Enfield, which I thought was an interesting number.
Were any of those ADUs?
I don't have the breakdown in front of me. Yeah, that's sort of the next level of breakdown. We started asking for some sort of big picture numbers to sort of see how things are going. That was a number that brought forth. I thought it was interesting. 16 units in one year, which is definitely the most we've had.
A long time.
Oh, years.
Yeah.
Just back on the contractor, are they not able to work if they're not stateside?
They're no, they can't. There's, the contract does not have a location requirement. They are an approved contractor through the state, so we can still work through them. However, there are aspects of that work statement that include like public hearing meetings and interactions, which obviously they cannot do remotely. So they're working through alternative plans, whether it will involve other subcontractors or what.
Got it.
So some parts can be done remotely, some cannot. And that's kind of a lot of challenge.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions for Eric on his reports? Alex?
Um, I have no substantive updates from the Heritage Commission this week. Enfield Building Association is meeting tomorrow.
I was not able to attend the Budget Committee meeting, but I suspect there are people in this room who were there and perhaps they give us the benefit of their insights.
I think we're picking on you, Dan.
Oh.
Or Tracy. Tracy, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dan. You're the chair.
Sure.
You're not the chair of the budget?
No.
Well, I was only there as a participant.
No, we had, we had the auditor here. And good presentation. That was probably the biggest piece of the night. I have an idea, which I said ahead, he can do with it what he wish. On the trustee, the trust fund piece.
Was the auditor fairly happy, please?
Oh, yeah, they were. It's a draft at this point, but there's no major.
We'll get you the report as soon as it's done, but the draft report states that there were no findings for this year. As normal, as they go through the audit, if they find little small things, we can just think they just work with us to do that. But no substantial findings. I think one big thing to highlight was that out of last year's or the 2022 to 2023 budget, there was a very small amount of money pushed over into the undesignated fund balance, which I pointed out to the Budget Committee was, it was kind of our goal to build that now that we're there. You know, we're budgeting accordingly and we're doing the projects that we've budgeted to do. And hopefully we're not dumping a lot of money in there every year moving forward. But it's something we'll continue to watch and move forward with. Other than that, you know, the value of the town, the assets of the town compared to the liabilities rose slightly and everything's moving in the right direction.
And per policy, we could choose as a board to use some of that to offset taxes if we felt like it was outside of the upper bound that we've set, right?
You can. Yeah, we watch that and we talk about it closely with the Budget Committee. Right now, we're a little bit under the 12% goal, but we're trying to hover right in that area. We don't want to really exceed the way we had set for ourselves.
And I talked to Dan, Dan raised it, and I know we raised it last year, that when you were saying the trustee piece, we have that money. I feel very strongly, and I asked, last time the auditor did not want to do write off of any kind of, and it sounds like this time that the person was more open to it.
Yeah, we had a little talk and we may start. Well, and we talked about looking at the reserve funds first maybe, but instead of waiting a few years and then writing off a big lump sum when they say finally, okay, we need to get this off the books to slowly start taking a little bit off the books every year, so we're not getting hit with a big chunk hill at one time. And I think that way it'll be a lot less noticeable. So and then there's a few, there's a few reserves out there that could really easily be wiped off the books moving forward and it would be little to no impact to the town, except for
Getting a few dollars.
appearing off paper is really what it would be.
Because I just think it's so confusing to explain it in meetings to the public. And the fact is, unfortunately, we realized a loss and in a corporation you book it. So I don't know why they were reluctant to let us book it before, but.
Just because it's still ongoing and it could be recoverable.
I mean, I think the reality of recovering more than a small percentage is very low after how many years. So I just feel like we're, it would be more honest to the public to, and then if you get unanticipated money and somehow the Easter bunny brings us back everything, I'm fine, but I don't think it's. If we can do it, I think it would be, and then in terms of being like, oh, we have 50,000, but we really have 33,000. That's where I, it, it makes everyone sad. Like, we know what we're doing, but it just doesn't sound good. It's confusing. Do you have other stuff from budget?
No, but I'll give kudos to Alyssa for keeping a nice set of books.
So that was budget. And then Tracy, you work for me?
The Energy Committee has met a couple of times. In fact, last Friday evening, we had a retreat to decide visioning and forward looking for the Energy Committee, which was very good. Object of the exercise being to define some goals for the Energy Committee, not specific goals, but broad ranging goals such as community education and promoting resiliency for those folks that may need it in the community and identifying some town policies and zoning policies to help them be in line with solar and AV charging futures. And of course promoting electrification where necessary, heat pumps, that sort of thing. So it was a visioning meeting. It was very good. Just the Energy Committee looking forward, not generally to specific, not to specific projects, but generally to broad goals that they can help the town out in the future.
Great. So Conservation had a special meeting following their expressed intention to try to make a donation to the Shaker Museum. And then they had their regular meeting. So I'll cover the special meeting first. The two, two representatives of the Enfield Shaker Museum did come to discuss with Conservation potential donation. There, Ed shared with you the two legal opinions explaining why you can't take conservation funds and just supply it to non-conservation specific purpose. That was not terribly well received by the Conservation Commission. Unfortunately, there is no audio on that video, so I can't tell you to go watch it, although you can see some relatively frustrated folks. So it was a pretty difficult meeting. We did manage to come to an understanding that they could set aside something for Conservation. So an agreement could be made with the Shaker Museum and they were referred to speak with Ed. So Ed's already had that, some of those preliminary conversations, so I think in the end it will, will work out. The, they set their budget, which also was a little bit challenging, but got done. And I was not able to attend the meeting last Thursday because I was at Kiddo's Open House. But my understanding is the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Tice, has expressed his intention to resign at the end of December. So I expect that we'll be hearing more on that. That's what I have.
You want to, questions for me or you want to move on? Let's move on to Town Manager's report.
All right. Thank you. For staff report, we continue to work on the Police Department hiring of two people. We have been working, as I told you, on a recruitment retention bonus program. I did give the Police Chief authority to start advertising that and it has brought us one fairly substantial lead that we'll be following up on. Hopefully this person gets through the whole process, but it did bring us in one person with the possibility of that. I don't know if you guys seen the ad that went out this last week, but Lebanon has now increased their recruitment bonus to $30,000. So it's, it just continues to jump and jump and jump. I talked to the Town Manager of Windsor. They have a couple openings and they're not getting applications. So it's a, it's a widespread problem. It's not just an Enfield thing, but we'll continue looking at that. We have some pretty good strategic ideas for the recruitment retention bonus that we've been working on. And we'll be bringing that to the, to the Select Board shortly before we make it a long-term type program. With that, DPW is accepting applications for water operator, cemetery and grounds maintainer, and will soon advertise for a seasonal winter plow truck operator. So you might see those going out. I have good news. The Watershed Protection Plan Grant that we applied for in collaboration with the City of Lebanon has been accepted and granted. So it's technically a grant for the City of Lebanon that we will be working with. So our next step is working with them to get the council to approve a $100,000 loan. That will be 100% forgiven at the end of this project. So we'll be working with that and I've been, already reached out to Jack in Canaan and I'll reach out to Alex in Hanover again to make sure that the four towns in the watershed are hopefully participating or at least have an opportunity to participate. So that should be a good project, looking forward at ways we can reduce pollution through the, through the watershed and into our lakes and into Lebanon's drinking water. So it's a, it's been a good project so far and it's nice to, to bring everybody to the table and work together on these types of issues. With that, I wanted to update you on the Public Safety Building Whitney Hall projects. There's a lot been happening in this realm lately. I meant to bring the plans tonight and I didn't do it, so I will be sending you guys the, the most updated plans. There's a few, I'm going to call it minor interior wall changes that we've been talking about, but for the most part, we have the floor plan that I think we're going to be moving forward with on Whitney Hall. It's, it's close to budget. We're still over budget a little bit, but what we kind of said last week is we think we're within striking distance. So that project's moving forward. We did give the okay to move to the next steps in engineering and start getting some final plans drafted. So we're working on that. I've been working closely with the library on the logistics and strategic planning for moving. Talking with Redlow, they told me last week, there's still a possibility that they can break ground in December of this year. So that kicked us into high gear. I've had three moving companies come to Whitney Hall, walk through with us to give us quotes. They're higher than I expected, like everything is. So we're looking somewhere probably in that $20,000 to $30,000 range to, to move us one way and we're going to have to move twice. So looking right now, going to be working with Alyssa to, to really dig into our 2023 budget to, to make sure that we have those kinds of funds before we move forward. But we're going to continue working on that. And I did sign the lease last week with the Shaker Museum. So we, we do have a lease contract in place for $2,000 a month for both buildings on the, on the site, which I think is fair for, for both the taxpayers and the Shaker Museum. With that, and the Public Safety Building continues to, to move forward. We've had a, a letter from Gary Hutchins about the Bristol Public Safety Building, which is coming in at a little lower budget than ours with ICF Construction and something. So I did talk with our contractor today. He's gonna, I authorized him to make a call to grow in construction, which is the construction company doing that. And we'll be having a meeting with the Impact Committee next week to discuss that in more detail. And so we'll continue moving on that. And then with that, I'm also in the final, final pieces of paperwork to finalize the purchase of property for the Public Safety Building. We do have a tentative scheduled date of the 19th, which is this Thursday, to close on that. As long as everything comes together, which it looks like it is, if not, it'll be very soon after that that we, that we get this done. So within the next week or so, I would expect that this, the purchase of that property is completed. So with that, we have some, I'll say some events coming up, but we have our big Halloween event. The Enfield Recreation Department is partnering with local organizations and individuals to host the annual trunk or treat, touch a truck haunted house and carnival on Saturday, October 28th from three to six at Hughes Park. If you'd like to participate in the trunk or treat or volunteer to help out, please contact Kevin at recreation@enfield.nh.us. And then immediately following that, the police and Enfield Recreation are hosting movie in the park where they'll be showing Ghostbusters at 6:30. So it should be a, a really fun day. And then we, it looks like we will be helping out on Halloween night as well, as we have in the past, just having some police out to help keep traffic safe. And I know the fire department's talking about handing candy out. Though that won't be an Enfield sponsored event, we'll be out there to, to help keep everybody safe. I do want to thank the fire department. I'm going to give them some, some kudos for Fire Safety Week. I've heard from quite a few people how great the day was on Friday. I had the honor of going over with the Police Chief and Fire Chief to be an ARF judge through the, the school. And we picked a student from each grade that was able to get a ride on the fire truck Friday morning to school. So that's always a, a highlight of the school year. And, but the fire department really spent the whole day over there. They started at 7:30 with rides to school with the kids. They set up the fire trucks out back. They did touch a truck at recess. And then the fire department also went into many, if not all, the classrooms throughout the day teaching fire safety. So I thank them for their time doing that and for, for spending time teaching the kids fire, fire safety to keep our, our town a little bit safer.
They're good things.
It was tremendous. When kindergartners come home and they start talking about safety rooms and exits, you know it sank in.
Yeah. No, I think it did really well. My wife was the same. She came home and she's like, wow, the fire department did a wonderful job today. And so hearing it from teachers, from students, from people throughout the community, I, I really wanted to just take a minute and thank them for putting so much effort into it. DPW will be hosting a stormwater class with Upper Valley. And we're really hosting it Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission will be here to teach a stormwater class for homeowners on, you know, ways to do rain gardens and different things to soak up their stormwater. So after this summer, we know how important it is that we try to capture as much of that. And, you know, we were, we were more than happy to host that class. It's this Thursday evening at five o'clock right here in the DPW conference room. So if anybody's interested in learning more about how to control their stormwater, please attend. Couple other DPW things. Maple Street is scheduled right now, weather permitting, to be paved this Friday. So we'll, we'll see what happens, but if not, they may be able to put it into early next week.
They're going to do the whole thing? I mean, has the plan?
Yeah, they're, I think they're planning on that.
That's tremendous.
So. And then I wanted to, to give kudos to Don Lashua from the DPW. He's achieved his status of Master Road Scholar through the UNH Technology Transfer Center. So thank him for taking the effort and putting in the classes that are needed to, to be able to get that Master Road Scholar certification. And then the rest of what we have on that update is really preparing for winter. The docks have been pulled with the announcement of the water being drawn down from the lakes. You may have noticed if you've been out around town that there's some serious leaf blowing going on with our new leaf blower. So they're having fun with that, but they're cleaning those ditches out, getting ready for, for winter. And then the plow frames have been mounted on the trucks as they're getting ready for first note apply pretty soon. And then the only other update I have is to let the board know I will be meeting this week with the Canaan Select Board, actually tomorrow, and we'll be talking about MYSL and youth sports as we, as we move forward in the project. That's really what's been going on. I had a great time since I haven't talked to you there at the ICMA Conference. There were some, some really good classes this time. One of them was in your package. Being able to take a short-term rental class from Airbnb was a really good perspective and something that we wouldn't get to do from here. So learning what they're doing and things that they've been experiencing across the country was, was a really timely class to go to. And then it's kind of funny to go halfway across the country to do this, but I spent a lot of time with the Town Manager, Deputy Town Manager of Lebanon, the Town Manager of Hanover and the Town Manager of Claremont. We seem to just be a pack that ran around Austin, Texas for a while. But we, we really did get a lot of stuff accomplished, solidified some relationships that were already there and we were able to, to brainstorm and talk about a lot of things for this upcoming year. So it was a, a really good time and a really good use of time, I believe, for all of us there. Thank you for allowing me to attend and I did tell staff, I brought a lot of stuff back, but don't get worried. I'm not going to start throwing out these projects out there. We have a lot on our plates right now.
Questions for the Town Manager?
Sounds good.
Good.
Excuse me, quick, quick thing. Are we or are Lasalle going to turn on some of the Christmas lights now that we have a lease?
I told the Shaker Museum that I would work with them and work with the public to see what we can do.
And we pay the electric bill now that you have a lease, is that correct?
We're going to pay a portion of it. We are not planning on paying for Christmas lights. I don't know if you guys know how expensive those are.
No, no, that, that, that's where I was headed as to how can the community perhaps help out?
So, yeah.
In that effort.
That down because I'll forget. I was going to have Evan start working on, on some of that and looking at ways that we can coordinate and get with the public and see what we can do to, to get some sponsors and do some things. Because I do think it'd be important to have them. But I also do not believe it's something that the, the taxpayers should be paying for.
No, certainly not. But there is community support when, to help out financially for that effort.
And if there's a fund somewhere that's a repository and we could communicate that out, I think it would help. Some people will give you 20 bucks and they used to do sponsorships. And I think they'll find that companies will be willing to do sponsorship.
Well, we want to do that. A big cost of what they had was actually like hiring people to set up the lights. So having some volunteer days to do that would be good. And then I think replacing some of those lights with LEDs would help keep the cost down as well.
They used to bring in a core, a couple of guys, volunteers who won't be available, I think, now. But, and I hate to throw it at Kevin as an extra chore, but if Kevin can organize some volunteers, there are people out there who would help set up lights.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna have him help try to coordinate an effort. He may not be the one that puts it all together, but if we can get a couple of people helping to work on that, it would be, I think it'd be great for the community.
It really would. Thank you.
Wendy, you are next on the agenda in the first portion of our business for the evening. Do you want to come up so we can?
Yes, thank you, Kate. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me.
And Wendy's giving the county updates since I didn't read the full bullet.
The first thing that I have, Kate asked for this a while ago and I didn't have them. And, and now I have them not only from the county, but from the Department of Revenue Administration. And it's the, the Grafton County Tax Comparison from year to year. So being an Enfielder, I am very sure to, to see that Enfield always goes down. I should, I should hand this out before I make any more jokes. I have 10 copies. I don't know if folks in the audience would like. Just so you see your county at work.
We're short. If there were more cost copies, did you get one?
I have.
You do not have them. Now you do.
You might send it over. There you go. There you go. We're in good shape. Thank you.
All right. Now I can, now I can be lighthearted because, because I have the document to back me up. So. Our decrease was not as much as some and a lot better than others. And as you know, these variations depend upon the town valuations. And so it, the county, the finalized budget was a point zero six, you'll see it at the bottom, a point zero six reduction in the tax rate this year. We're proud of that. It wasn't without some bloodletting. But it was point zero five from the commissioners. And then after the delegation, the Executive Committee got through with it. They got it down to, they, they, they scored an extra point on us. So and the, the budget, I thought what I would do is just give you some, some highlights, I think. So the proposed budget, it's, I'm sure it's been a while since you've read it. And like I said, the, the finalized budget differs a little bit, but just to hit some quick highlights. The, the biggest expenses that we had were wage increases, nursing home contract nursing expenses. And we did have one new position, which we'd been asking for, for a couple of years now. And we finally got it and it was really important to us. It was a dispatch or emergency services. Let's see, just to, to, to hit the highlight, those are the primary expenses, the primary revenues, the in-interest income. We got $17.1 million from the federal government in ARPA funding, but then that money earns interest. And so we're happily, that's non-restricted. So we're happily, we've got about, I think, $300,000. So we're very happy about that and interest rates are sky high, as everybody knows that tried to buy a home last week or a car this summer. The nursing home census is going up because COVID has slowed down despite the workforce shortage. And I think that's, I, I just want to, if I could talk to you about some real challenges that we've had. So I'm sure you don't remember the letter that accompanied the proposed budget, but the two. Um, but the two unions, uh, are, are, I should say, one union and our employee, uh, council asked for, uh, and across the board, um, uh, a three dollar increase, um, this year. They asked for a dollar amount rather than a percentage amount. And they got that idea. It was really interesting, actually. They got that idea from the governor of Georgia, who came up with that, uh, among others, I suppose, at this point. But the point is, is that because, you know, everyone gets the same amount. They're kind of tired. The folks on the lower end of the ladder are kind of tired of seeing the administrators get the big bucks. Uh, and so they asked for a dollar amount. They asked for three. Uh, we gave them two. Uh, and then I will skip, because I just kind of want to be thematically unified here. Um, so we've brought, we've, we've brought all of our employees. There were, this is interesting to me, you know, I used to be a state rep. Um, our lowest paid position at the, at the, um, at the county was fourteen dollars and forty-seven, uh, uh, cents an hour. There were five people, uh, out of the, I think we have three fifty now, uh, five people that were earning that. As of now, all of our wages have been boosted up, uh, beyond what the state always asks for is that fifteen dollar minimum. So we have got everybody boosted up. I can say, um, that, well, actually, before I talk about nurses, um, let me say that after the, um, commissioners passed their proposed budget, uh, we had a public hearing and, uh, some good ideas on the part of the county administrator, the nursing home administrator, uh, the human resources department, the commissioners, and some public input as well. Uh, we all put our heads together and we did targeted increases, uh, which is a fantastic idea and something that we've been asking for, for a while. But, you know, the wheels of government turn slowly. This year was the year, uh, because, uh, contract nursing expenses were so high. So we lifted up, um, the, uh, nursing staff in the nursing home and the, uh, Department of Corrections Corrections Officers by five dollars an hour. And, uh, we are doing extremely well. Um, so what I mean by that is, is that we've been able to eliminate eight, um, uh, LNA, Licensed Nursing Assistant, eight, eight LNA contract, contract positions. Um, we're paying the LNA's that we get through travel agencies fifty bucks an hour. They don't get that, of course. The agencies get it. The whole country's doing that. It's, it's extremely expensive. Um, we've got, uh, the LNA's down by eight. We've got the RNs down by two. Um, the better news is that we're not short applications ever. Um, and, uh, we've even been able to get some folks to come back up, I'll say home, back up to Haverhill from this area. So some people were commuting all the way down to Dartmouth Hitchcock, and they're not doing that anymore. Uh, because we're paying, um, uh, equivalent, you know, with their quality of life and everything else. So we're enormously happy about that. I am the president of the New Hampshire Association of Counties. I do talk to all the other counties, and I've heard, yes, it works. It's not a magic bullet. You know, there's still a terrible, terrible workforce shortage. Um, so, uh, so that's that. Uh, that was a change that was made after this. Um, uh, the, uh, we have been spending down, uh, our ARPA money. That's the American Rescue Plan Act money. We got seventeen point one million, as I said. I think our finance department, we now, we now have a finance department. That's, that's new. Um, but our finance department is looking at it and trying to figure out exactly what projects we can do, what we can't do. For instance, we cannot put in septic tanks, but we can put in wells. Um, uh, I think we have about one point seven or two million left, but that's, that's sort of, you know, it, it, it changes. But what I want to say is, is that a couple of us, uh, really, I, I had been doing this. Uh, it, it meant a lot to me. I had been doing it for two terms, last term and this term. And this term, uh, we have a new board, uh, another new commissioner, and we put money out into the community, which was so incredibly important. Sorry, I didn't mean to get loud all of a sudden, but it, it's important. Uh, so we gave a million to nonprofits, just a couple of those. We give five hundred thousand. Actually, I say, I should say, you, all of us taxpayers, uh, in Grafton County provide, um, five hundred thousand to nonprofits to do the work that some, in some other states, the state government does, uh, to help vulnerable people. Uh, but we gave a million in addition to that, uh, to other, other, uh, nonprofits. We gave five hundred thousand, um, to small businesses, and we gave five hundred thousand to municipalities. And actually, we ended up giving slightly more than five hundred thousand to small businesses and municipalities because there were some late applications, um, et cetera, et cetera. Couple of glitches and, and we decided we're here to help people. We've got all this money. Let's move it. Let's get it out into the community. Um, I'll stop talking. I've, I've got all this paper primarily to answer any questions that you might have. But the elephant, the elephant in my room for the, for the last month has been broadband. Uh, and, uh, I'm happy to say that the Grafton, it was, it was interesting, uh, but it was a unanimous vote. Um, a unanimous vote to accept, uh, uh, an eleven million dollar, twelve million dollar grant with a, we have to put up five million.
Yeah, so seventeen million dollar project.
And just because we're all Enfielders here, uh, Ed Morris has been extremely helpful uh, in the public hearings, in the information sessions. Uh, he reached out to me personally, uh, to tell me how important it was. Um, of course, you know, we're all elected officials. Those things have, have an impact, and we get a lot of public support for it. Um, the money came from, uh, we, as you know, uh, an undesignated fund balance is required to be between eight and sixteen percent, uh, of a budget. Uh, ours was at twenty-two percent, and that's not because we hoard taxpayer money. It's because we got extra revenue from the state. Um, so we have been using some of that extra money, uh, the twenty-two percent. Uh, we've been using some of that to keep, to, to help keep the taxes low. Um, this year, it was a very difficult decision. Um, but we, uh, voted to take the five million dollar match uh, out of the undesignated fund balance, which still leaves us with nine percent.
A little over nine, yeah, right, nine percent.
Yeah, so we're still, uh, in the healthy, in the healthy range. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to add to that, too. I think it's important people understand, well, Enfield doesn't benefit directly. We benefit tangentially by being able to build groups that aren't there with our neighbors. And also, it, it really is gonna be life-changing for some of these folks who have no other chance. No private capitalist company with any sense would ever go build in some of these places, right? So I think what you guys said was, I, I, I know it was probably really, I mean, it's hard to spend that kind of money, right?
Yeah.
But, um, I think it's a really big deal that you all unanimously made that move. And I'm very grateful, and I hope that it will, especially with the housing crunch and the shortage. Maybe people will be able to look a little further afield at a place that's awesome to live, but didn't have any of that before. And it's not gonna happen overnight. I know it's a long process, but worthwhile.
Well, then I can talk about that a little bit. I've spent some time on this, helping as much as I can. I know it's gonna really help Grafton County. I use the Fast Roads Project a lot as a, an example of what building out that middle mile can do. And we're gonna have a discussion tonight with Hub sixty-six. We pulled the data that we're ninety-seven percent served in Enfield. So fast roads built out in Enfield. This Grafton County project being built out through Grafton County is going to make it feasible for Hub sixty-sixes and whoever else is out there doing fiber to be able to build these, these last mile places and to, to get broadband to the rural communities where it's extremely expensive to build out. So I would like to thank the commissioners and the delegation for their support on this, and we'll continue working. Hopefully, we can get some partnerships to lower that cost from five million to, to get some private money to, to help offset that, but.
I think it's worth acknowledging that Coach's, um, experience in Bristol, too, that was key to having some ideas about how to be creative on maybe exchanging some private work for some public benefits along the way. So a pretty neat, uh, way to partner up. Nick used to be in Bristol, and I think most of you know he's now in Lebanon. So a really good relationship to have, and the more we can work together and not just start paying people to use their brains. We don't need to keep hiring people, uh, left and right if we can cooperate. And I think this is a really great example of, of that kind of cooperation, really bringing in big dollars. The other thing I wanted to acknowledge is that our federal delegation went to bat for us, um, in a big way. And so politics aside, it's a big deal, um, no matter what side of the table you're on, to have your federal representatives go to bat for you, so.
Yeah, it's a really big deal for a county in New Hampshire to get seventeen million dollars from the NTIA. So that's a big project.
A lot of really good work was done on behalf of, or, or not on behalf of the, uh, the Broadband Committee. Uh, very, very strong advisors, very interested, um, and receptive commissioners. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think we were what, one of fifty recipients of, of, of an award? And one thing that Kate said that was interesting to me, or maybe it was, maybe it was Ed, but the idea of, you know, how this helps towns. I heard from Sean Mulholland, towards the Town Manager of Lebanon, uh, after the, the vote. Uh, and he said, you know, there's such a housing crunch around here, that this helps Lebanon because folks can work remotely. Folks, you know, in the future will be able to live elsewhere, you know, and telecommute. And so, yeah, yeah, our biggest, our biggest wrinkle, uh, was, was any unforeseen, uh, issues coming up. Um, you know, you know, uh, using the fund balance, but we felt that, and, and we heard from so many constituents, primarily in Dorchester, Orford, Grafton, um, that we were all on board with it.
Thank you so much. Do you guys have questions for Wendy on her report? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, we are moving on next to Doug Smith on behalf of Massoma Lakeside Park Committee, Park Infrastructure Project. One of Doug's.
I'm here at the request of the Massoma Lakeside Park Committee. They voted to send me to speak to the Select Board. And I brought with me Patty Feed, who was a member of the committee, and our master gardener. Patty, uh, is working very hard to make the place beautiful. The relationship, the partnership, I guess I should call it, between the administration of the town of Enfield and the Lakeside Park Committee goes back a long way. For many years, we've known that the public of people of Enfield were underserved with respect to access to Massoma Lake. The lake takes up a big part of our town. Most of the lake is in our town, but it's almost entirely in private hands. And the people of, of Enfield have very little opportunity to enjoy the lake itself, unless they own a boat, trailer at the end, go to the beach, go for swim. So this has been a longstanding idea. It goes back a decade ago. Uh, it became apparent that maybe we might get this park because there was a piece of property that was being used by the New Hampshire DOT to rebuild Shaker Bridge. They're using it as a staging ground. We learned, uh, that it would become surplus when they get through with it. It was about a little over three acres right on the lake. So people started talking about the possibility of, of acquiring this property when the DOT got through with it. In two thousand and fifteen, the Board of Selectmen asked Meredith to form a committee to, and check on the feasibility of, of, uh, having a park at the location. And, uh, the idea developed at that time that it would be totally funded by private contributions, or at least contributions other than the, from the budget of the town of Enfield. So, um, we don't, uh, get a lot of attention because we're not on, in the budget. We, the, the, uh, the cooperation involves a lot of time, time by staff, and it's very well appreciated. We've worked well with four town managers and a number of select boards, and we've gotten a lot accomplished together. But we're not in the budget because we, uh, promised the town that we'd fund the thing privately. Um, the first, we've divided the project into three phases. Phase one was the construction, the, the acquisition of the land. Uh, that was accomplished in seven, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. The funds were raised privately, and the land was contributed to the town of Enfield. A town meeting in two thousand and nineteen, the townspeople overwhelmingly accepted the gift, almost unanimously. Um, and Meredith promised them again that it would be funded, the park could be funded, uh, privately. By the way, I want to apologize for her not being here. She's having another, she is chairman of the committee, and she is having another bout of, uh, hypogenic organizing pneumonia. If you want to know what that is, you'll have to look it up. Um, but anyway, the town asked her to form this committee. She did. They, the committee, some of whom are still on it, many of whom are still on it, began to investigate the feasibility and also to raise the money to fund it. First phase was to buy the land and give it to the town. We had a charrette. A lot of people came, lasted a couple of days. The overwhelming desire of the townspeople was a shelter where they could, where they could go if it rained. So phase two was the completion of the pavilion, which we, the shelter is now called a pavilion. Uh, that money was raised privately. The pavilion was completed in two thousand and twenty-one. It's very well-used by the community, concerts, meetings, weddings. It's a popular place. You haven't heard a bad word about the pavilion. Phase three of the project is the phase we're in now. Phase three involves regrading the parking area away from the lake, paving it, curving it, and lining it so that it'll take up less space, landscaping the parking area, we're probably, uh, have less, less runoff as a result, and creating walkways, pathways into the woodland area, all of which is to be handicapped accessible. They, Paul Mersky, who donated his design capabilities, after he completed the pavilion, he, he drew plans for phase three as early as September of two thousand and twenty-one. He commer, presented some plans to the committee, and they were pretty much what we're working with today, although they And they were pretty much what we're working with today, although they've required some changes. The big emphasis from Paul's point of view and the committee has embraced is to make it all handicap accessible. So even the trail system will be accessible to handicapped visitors. We have a couple of groups, rather large groups of handicapped people who visit the park regularly. Perhaps you've seen them trying to get into their kayaks and so forth. So handicapped accessibility is a main part of of that. We raised the money for this phase, almost beginning at that time. And by February of two thousand and twenty-two, we had eighty percent of the money in hand for phase three. That was two thousand and twenty-two. A year and a half ago. In that same month, it came to our meeting and gave us a timetable, which for phase three, which had it finished by fall of two thousand and twenty-three. We accepted that as a good timetable. Our major grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund has a completion deadline of, I think, September of twenty-four. So we figured that gave us enough margin. Unfortunately, since that time, it's kind of bogged down. And the reason I'm here is because the committee has become seriously concerned on the, of, about the delay. We haven't turned the shovel over there in well over a year. In phase three, we have replaced a stone, a rotting wall with a stone wall. That was done, I guess it was completed last year or so, but since then, we haven't done a thing. I'm worried about that for a number of reasons. The committee's worried about it because the longer we go, the more expensive it's gonna be. We're very concerned about our donors. We have a hundred and twenty-odd private donors, donors which we had to nurture to get the money in the first place and whom we want to continue to nurture because we're gonna need them in the future.
So have you made these donors' promises you're not fulfilling? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we told them what we were gonna do and we gave them a rough timetable. Not, we didn't say by September of two thousand and twenty-three, but we did.
Okay, so it's twenty-three, you said twenty-two before, I just want to make, so it's two thousand and twenty-three you were hoping for. So.
I, I said that in, in two thousand and twenty-two, Ed gave us a timetable, which would complete the work by September of twenty-three.
So can I, because you've been, I don't want to cut you short, but you've given us a history over the last ten minutes. What are you here to specifically ask us for? I want to dial it right in.
The product, project has bogged down.
Okay.
In May, in April of this year, six months ago, we were told that it was in the hands of of an engineering firm, Pathways.
And we all voted on that, so we're familiar with it.
That was June.
And that was June.
You voted on that. Well, it didn't come from us. We, we have no information on it.
Okay.
So six months later, we still don't have a report.
Are you proposing we fire them? What are you proposing?
No.
Okay.
We're proposing that you get the answers that we haven't been able to get. Who is Pathways Engineering? What is their engagement? How much is it gonna cost? And when are we gonna have it?
Okay, so I think that's something operationally that falls in the town manager's office unless somebody else wants to.
I can answer that right now.
Can you answer that? Great.
This was brought to the select board on April third for the first time to see the plan. The plan was reviewed and approved by the select board. As required by the Land and Water Conservation Grant, we went out to RFP.
Okay.
That came back. It was awarded on June fifth by the select board to Pathways Engineering to engineer the parking in the trail.
Okay.
And to apply for a stormwater DES permit to be able to build this. They've been moving forward and doing this. It was told to the Massoma Lakeside Park Committee at that time that this would be done, that the engineering would be done this summer and construction would be done next spring and summer. And that's what track we're on. There's no way to get that engineered and permitted by DES.
So you're simply unhappy with the timeline, is that?
Very, well, we're not only unhappy with the timeline, we haven't had this, the benefit of this information. We still don't know what pathways, we haven't seen any contract. We don't know what they're gonna cost. We don't know if they gave you a completion date and so what it was.
So I would say those are normal operations pieces. They don't typically flow down to committees. If you feel like you need a copy, you can certainly review it. But that is a standard operations piece and committees don't control day-to-day operations, right? So I know you guys are really wrapped up in this and you put a ton of really important work into it. But I also know we have to prioritize as a town. So I would have.
The park is privately funded.
Can you let me finish? I understand it's privately funded. You guys say that all the time. I'm gonna say something very important. The work is privately funded that is being done in the park. The work that we are asking the town offices and the DPW and everyone else to do is not privately funded. That is taxpayer money. And we have to allocate what we are doing as a town and the bigger picture. So we can't spend all of our days and all of our time on this. I know that's not what you're asking me, but you're asking us to push a project that's a park ahead of some substantial other town projects, if I'm hearing you correctly.
It's being pushed forward. I talked to Pathways Engineering weekly. They're doing the engineering. They're on a scheduled timeframe, as we told them going into this year, to get permitting done for construction next spring.
Do you have any idea what it's gonna cost?
I can get an hourly rate for you, but engineering is engineering. When they find a wetland, they have to re-engineer something. They don't give you a total, this is the total project.
And we went through that. We remember the, the whole, the archaeological issue that we had to go around, right? Where we decided whether we were gonna find somebody who could do, you know, a dig and all the inspections needed or if you were gonna build the site. So I think a lot of these questions aren't simple and straightforward, unfortunately. Unless, I, I'm not sure what else we can do for you. We can't.
I can talk to Jeff and see if he has an idea of where we're at right now and how much more work.
I'd like to see it get up to the front barrier somehow.
Okay.
Because it has bogged down and our, our public is, they're happy with the park. But I know our donors are restless, a couple of them we've heard from.
Okay, so this is a donor issue, actually.
It is largely.
Okay, and I understand that. Is there a way you can explain to the donors and communicate them the information Ed's giving you? I think many donors, you know, I work with them daily, understand it's, everything is a little bit slower.
What do you want us to tell them?
You are the ones doing this project. I would suggest that you listen to what Ed is giving you for information and find a way to communicate it so that they know that it's not just sitting somewhere not moving. It is moving. I think it is very hard for donors when they don't see the shovel in the ground, right? I totally get that. And we have that all the time in town on projects, like, hey, why isn't this getting paved yet? So communicating to them where it is in the process, what the expectation is, and Ed's giving you some of that information. But he certainly could give you more if you don't feel like you have enough. Then you can communicate. But one of the other things in working with donors that I know is that you have to be very careful to not let them hamstring your project, right? So donors don't direct how your project is done and when. And you can smile at me all you want, but we as a town can't take one donor and make their opinion on a project more important than the rest of the work we have to do, right?
I don't know about that. I, that wasn't an issue. It's not so much one donor, there are a hundred and twenty of them. I, I know as a donor, though, I don't like giving my money to a nonprofit or anybody and letting it sit in the bank. If I, if I'm gonna donate to a project, I want to see the project. There's no point in donating to a nonprofit who's gonna bank your funds. You might as well keep them. So that's donor perspective.
Yeah, I think it's a good time to put out a letter and let people know what's happening because it's gonna be months of behind the scene work that's going on.
You know who's got a really good experience in the library? The library could probably give you some good ideas.
I can't write that letter because I don't understand why it's taking four months to do this survey. I don't understand that.
Well, there's multiple surveys that have been done. There's been wetland surveys, there's been topography and geology.
Have you seen them? I haven't seen them.
An old topography, previous topography. I haven't seen anything from this latest.
Yeah, I sent out the thing last week of all the points that they're doing. They don't have it mapped because they're, they have a little bit to finish to do that. But they need all of that to be able to show what the stormwater runoff will do on this land and to be able to apply for a DES permit.
Are all those flags for designated wetlands?
That's where they took a shot. Every one of those, they took a topography shot.
So that's this project?
Yeah, they're doing.
I can see that there's things, there's new things there that weren't there before. I was like, what the heck is going on?
What about taking some pictures and sharing them? I mean, I think knowledge really helps people see the activity, right? So like Alice saying, she could see it. What if we're, you're able to say like, hey, you can't see a shovel in the ground, but these little pieces, this is what it means.
What did you say you saw?
There's all these ties. So I've walked, you know, on the.
Did you understand what the need was for those, all of those points on the ground?
I wasn't really privy to the project.
No, I didn't understand them either.
Yeah.
But it looked like an awful lot of work.
Designated wetlands, which is like really important.
It's not necessarily wetlands. I don't think they found, I mean, if they would have found wetland problems, we'd be having problems.
Oh, that's what it just does on them.
Yeah, they're.
My point, Alice, the committee doesn't understand this at all because we're not informed.
Well, it sounds like the timing to be having this conversation. Like, I'm happy that this conversation is happening.
Maybe Ed could just do like a one-page summary of where we are.
Yeah.
Not going into all the details, but boom, boom, boom.
Absolutely do that and work with Pathways to get.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that would resolve, I think, the big issues that we're trying to grapple with here.
Yeah, Dave is online. Dave, go ahead.
It's a safe phase, probably rooted.
His microphone is on.
You hear me now?
We can.
I can.
Okay. As a member of the committee, I think this is primarily a communication problem. I think the issue of, you know, what needs to be done and the fact that it's happening slower than would be ideal is definitely the case. But communication such as, as Ed's summary, perhaps not just once, but on a monthly or every other monthly basis, when, when work is expected to happen, not over the winter, that would be very helpful, not only to the committee, but for us to be able to move that information to the wider community that has been our donors. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so it sounds like we have a plan to move forward. Is everyone on the board comfortable with that?
I am.
Working on it?
Yep.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, short-term rental ordinance discussion. I want to preface this by saying we are not gonna try to hash this out and rewrite it tonight, right? We have done some of that work. So the purpose of having this on the agenda tonight is to bring some new information that Ed got at ICMA forward, some information Rob had to provide, and also to look at the latest draft. No, this isn't gonna become the rule of law tonight, so I don't want anybody to stress out or freak out. And I do want to limit discussion in that state to new ideas, new things. If somebody really feels like they need to make a long statement on it, I want them to send it to Ed so that we can actively incorporate it into the body of work we're doing. Does that sound fair to everyone?
Very fair.
Okay.
But my impression, you're just personally, is that, you know, what we've put together is reasonably useful. Need a little fine tuning maybe, but nothing that we need to take a hammer or an axe to at this point.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think basically we, we, we lucked out for a little bit. We had some decent information.
Yep.
And, and we've gone in, I think, the right direction.
So do you want to just give us a little bit about?
I can highlight, like I said in my, my introduction. I was lucky enough to sit in a short-term rental class. I didn't have any clue. I probably should have done that research before, but when I showed up and found that it was being taught by Airbnb and then there were some other data people that were in the audience. One of the things I learned, and I don't want to quote the number he quoted, because I don't know if it's right or not, but that the Airbnb did, they agreed that there's thousands of short-term rental platforms that people could use out there. We all mostly talk about Airbnb VRBO. There's a couple, but the one guy said up to ten thousand and Airbnb admitted that there were thousands. So there's a lot of them out there. Quick search, we found a few other ones out there. There's ones based around places that take pets and there's one based around other places.
That's very close.
There's a lot of stuff out there.
Yeah.
So anyway, looking at that, I pulled some Airbnb data. So what I found on that, and I don't know that they look at all these platforms, but they definitely look at the, the top two biggest ones. They said that right now in Enfield, there's forty-six active listings on their sites for short-term rentals. With that, I think I'm just estimating fifty. There's probably at least a few out there that are not on these sites. With that, there's a sixty percent occupancy rate per year with an average daily rate of four hundred and ten dollars and ninety cents a night. And the average avenue, annual revenue for each of those short-term rentals is eighty-eight thousand dollars, eighty-eight point five. So that's real quick. I can give you a kind of a down and dirty of Rob's, but if I want to summarize it in one sentence, it was a housing summit and they pretty much said that people talking about short-term rentals hurting or exacerbating the housing shortage. They said the percentage even in the big cities like New York is such a small amount of these that it's not really making much of a difference on the housing shortage. And if we look at Enfield, let's call it fifty of these in town, I would bet half or more of those would be a, a second home or somebody's home anyway. So it's gonna be a very small amount of those that are probably primarily being used as a business purpose. I know there, there, there's a few of them on the street I live on, but they may still keep them if they weren't primarily business, but they're rented every weekend through the summer. So with that, that's what we have. We have had an uptick in calls and concerns, mostly around the stuff that we have in the ordinance, noise and parking and those types of things. Last year, I received two calls and they were both about the same rental. This year, I personally received at least ten calls and they're spread out throughout town. So, you know, do we want to say, hey, that's ten complaints? No, because I know other people have gotten complaints. If we look at a percentage increase, it's a pretty good increase in one year of that. Do I think we have a big issue and problem with short-term rentals? No, I don't. But as we've stated when we brought this forward, especially with our ordinance, the way it's gonna work, it has to go through town meeting. I don't think we want to wait till we have a problem. And so I think it's something to look at. We're definitely on the right path. I've read a couple other ordinances out there that Airbnb recommended. If you look in their short-term rental ordinance, I didn't really like any of them, but they're all on that premise and that's what the talk was about, creating the registry, knowing that they're there, working on the parking issue and the noise issues and the things that we have, we have authority to really work on. As Alice pointed out last time, they do, Airbnb just released, you caught it when it was new, the short-term rental registry of a municipality has an ordinance and it supports kind of Airbnb's mission too. It's not banning Airbnbs or something like that. And it's, it's a supportive type ordinance, which I believe ours would fall in that category with them. Then if we wanted to issue a registry number, Airbnb would support us and make sure that everybody that listed on their site had a registry number or they would not be allowed to list on Airbnb. So that's something that they would do. As we get a little bit closer in the ordinance, I would like to work with them since they're. As we get a little bit closer in the ordinance, I would like to work with them since they're operating this up to be able to have some of their professionals review the ordinance before we move it forward and make sure that it's in line with helping the municipalities. They do understand the issues. I mean, they're dealing with it worldwide, not only across the country. I actually watched a documentary on Netflix about, I think it was Netflix, about Airbnb and the problems they were having in London. And this was like four or five years ago.
Hmm.
A lot of it's the same stuff we're talking about. And, and there were, you know, nightmares on both sides. Landlords having problems, tenants having problems showing up to unsafe and locations. So Airbnb's noticed that this is an issue and it's something that they're trying to help work on. So, um, they've helped states craft legislation. They're helping municipalities craft legislation. Yeah. So it's, it was a really good class to go to. I think it was good information and I did get some really good contacts of some people to contact in their organization. That's kind of what I, what I have and got to as much information as I.
Moving forward, what would your thoughts be for procedure?
I think we fine tune this a little bit more and then I will double check with our attorney. But I think we, you know, when we're ready to do it, we move our ordinance forward and we make it as an article at town meeting. It would be a select board ordinance and not a zoning ordinance because we need, we need teeth in a way where if we're going to follow the fine structure and the, the police would be able to issue that, it wouldn't be a zoning ordinance issue.
And if it passes at a town meeting, then it goes into effect. But if it fails to pass a town meeting, it does not go into effect?
It would not go into effect. This is an ordinance that would.
So it'd be proposed select board ordinance.
That's how town meetings up works on records, yeah. Um, I know, noticed under definitions, those are left open. Was that, is that something we might have the attorney fill in or do we?
Well, we can talk about it. That was, I think, a really good recommendation from Eric. To have, you know, if we're going to have nighttime occupants and daytime occupants listed in the ordinance, we should probably define what that means. It's, it could mean a lot of things and I didn't put a lot of time into trying to crack that. I can do that moving forward.
Hmm.
Or, I mean, I think that's something, it's a difficult spot in this ordinance because I don't think we want to say, no, you can't have friends and family over when you have a short-term rental, but how many people are we going to allow to stay there and use the services? And, and do I think?
I think we're going to need to define the value of a porta potty. If we're basing this on the, uh, sewer capacity, septic capacity, especially for the ones around the lake, then I think we need to define the, what a porta potty does in terms of the effect of the occupancy.
If you want to allow that or do that. I know there are a few places here that do do that, but.
Yeah, only because it's mentioned. I think we, it has to be defined. The other thing that I noticed in the ordinance, uh, i- is that we've used the generic term town in a few cases. Contact the town, the town can do this. I think we need to refine who we're speaking of within the town as those jurisdictional responsibilities.
So I know, I know it's land use administrator as your first instance and the whereby is, I believe. So, um, maybe that's something that could be verified if they're the town representative in the first instance. I don't know. Rather than having to write it out every time, I, I'm sure there's a way to incorporate that. But I, I would like to see maybe this go to legal, I guess. I mean, unless somebody has substantive changes that in, from the board. Uh, we did incorporate a lot of the really excellent feedback folks gave to us, um, and thoughts. So the, I think notable is the sixty-minute drive. And, and see what they come back and tell us we can and can't do. I don't know how you guys feel, but I'm not a lawyer, so I feel relatively comfortable with this. That I don't know how to define overnight destination. I mean, I have in my mind what they are, but again, I'm not a lawyer, so.
If we're looking for sort of a non-arbitrary definition, arbitrary, when our noise ordinance kicks in would be a logical time.
But we don't have a noise.
Well, okay.
So state.
Nineteen forty-eight.
It's not effectively.
The state does have a time.
The state has a time.
But I think that, you know, that kind of thing would be a logical.
I like that, using the date time.
Ninth day delineation.
Separately, I asked Ed if we shouldn't look at the non-noise noise ordinance and consider, I, I personally wonder about considering eliminating it because state law covers it.
But would part of it be, you know, it's going to be considered a neighbor's.
Hmm.
But that's sort of a.
Yeah, because this is really just counseling people how to keep people safe and how to make good decisions and how to be a good neighbor and also a good host. And we want people to come to town and have enough information to make good decisions. I guess.
And I really liked the way that you wrote it in there that if it's your primary occupancy and you're renting out an ADU or something, you're exempt from the registry, but still expected to follow the. I like the way you wrote.
I like the fourteen-day exemption as well.
Yeah, no, yeah, I wrote that, I wrote that as a suggestion.
I like that.
Erica's put substantial work into this. I really appreciate it, Eric. I'm getting, getting a lot of our thoughts.
What was the reminder? What was the fourteen days?
If you are renting for fourteen days or less per year, I hope I'm paraphrasing correctly.
Oh, good, yeah.
And you would be exempt from the regulations.
From your primary.
You're exempt from the, from registering or being inspected, but not from following.
Right.
You still have to have all the safety stuff if you still have occupancy on this thing. You know, when, that's truly a homeowner renting out for a short period of time.
And some of what I really.
Find that balance that people were looking for, I mean.
Some of what I really learned in the discussions is that there are a significant number of people who own properties in this town who do not realize you probably shouldn't do things without a permit and you probably shouldn't have rooms with no egress. That made me a little nervous, so I think this has been a, a learning opportunity for a lot of people.
That's a good.
It's, it's kind of, it's kind of scary when you realize people might be renting something with no window to get out of. Yeah. So I think this is an important process. Are you guys comfortable sending it to legal or do you have other steps you'd like to take? Is that?
If you guys are okay with that, what I'd like to do is clean this up just a little bit and run it through Airbnb and see if they have any recommendations. If they're good with it, send it to legal. If they have any substantive recommendations, I'll come back here before I go to the.
Makes sense.
I think so.
I actually question sending it to a private business that has very clear, you know, competitive motivations.
I just wanted to see if they have any good ideas that maybe we didn't think of.
Yeah, I mean, their ideas are all going to be to their benefit, not to ours.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but they won't be changed.
We can.
We can decline them.
I, I, I have reservations around, um, private corporations writing public regulations.
Oh, I wouldn't say we let them write, but it might be interesting to hear what they think. We might learn that what we really want is the exact opposite of what they think. Um, it might be a good clue and I'm fine with that process. And this was really interesting. I, I like the toolkit, this is really interesting. I mean, not that I.
Semi-impressed. I know they got their end of the heart.
Of course, yeah.
Paid the time and money and effort to put together that toolkit.
They want to stay in business.
They were getting a lot of bad.
Oh, yeah.
So they had.
I think it's really interesting that the average annual revenue is eighty-eight thousand dollars. And then I told Ed, when I looked it up, I realized you could just become a squatter in California and that seems like an even better job.
Will you ask our town attorney if he is not comfortable in reviewing this, that he would recommend who would have done it for other municipalities?
Oh, they.
It's kind of, it's a little bit of a specialty, not in the course of most attorneys.
I can ask him, but I'm sure they're fine.
I think their firm is a pretty big firm.
Yeah, they cover a lot of the state.
Yeah. Um, Dave, do you have something new to add outside of what's already been discussed?
Only that I echo Eric's concerns about, uh, um, private corporation, um, input on that. I, I think it needs to be taken quite skeptically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have a pass forward on that.
Mm-hmm.
Let's move on to policy review. We have a personnel policy update proposed in the package, so one pager. Um, it is the stick leave buyback program. Um, and it just strikes a portion of a sentence that really is probably not.
Call it fluff.
Yes, I was trying to think of a nice way. So fluff is true. I was going to say not needed to help you understand what is going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I.
Well, and the word that we really struck out to us was the word all.
Mm-hmm.
When not all employees get this benefit, so.
And I think you could argue over meaningful and I just, yeah, it's fluff.
Correct.
Would you like a, a motion? Do you just need support on it? What?
I would cover question.
I would do a motion if you guys are ready.
Yeah.
Where did this come from?
This is in the personnel policy.
No, I understand that, but who, whose idea would you say is the buyback program? I- is it something that you have come up with?
No, it was then in there, but I fully support it.
Yeah. Yep, this is a pretty standard class for most employers and towns and schools. It's.
Actually, don't speak for schools, it's not.
Well, it's not all schools, but, um, since I have considerable experience in different places, it depends on what, what you're doing. But when you're looking at negotiations, there are definitely school districts that do this. And since I sat on the school board at one point, I feel qualified to comment on the topic.
Sure.
Um, so do we have a motion?
I'll move to revise, uh, the section six point seven stick leave buyback program as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstentions passed unanimously. Thank you. Acceptance of Granite State Cleaning. We're going to go on to acceptance of Granite State Clean Fleets VW Trust Fund Grants.
I don't see how the math works on this.
Can we let Ed start?
Sure.
Getting very excited about it again. So let's let Ed start and then when you're ready, you can comment after he goes.
On the total estimated project costs is around.
That's what I meant.
Okay, that's fine.
So really what it is is, um, uh, DPW Jeremy, working with Jim, put in for a DPW Clean Fleets grant. And we were awarded a twenty-five percent grant for the purchase of our, I think it's a two thousand and six, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, plow truck that we're getting ready to replace. They will replace anything that's older than two thousand and eleven, trying to get cleaner diesels on the road. Um, so we are, we're asking you to accept this grant, but we do have a caveat. We had just applied for an eighty percent DPW diesel, clean diesel grant.
Hmm.
And in working with the program, they recommended that we put in for this other grant. If we get the other grant, we will choose which one we want. And I, you know, which one we'll choose. Jeremy tried really hard to get them both so we could actually make. But they would not go for it.
Good man.
Yeah, we like that kind of.
Jim, did you have anything else to add?
Nope, that covers it. So it's going to get rid of a, a truck that we are struggling to keep on the road at the moment. And, uh, one of the things that the grant requires is that the, the machine that's being replaced gets destroyed. It can't be traded in, it can't be sold, it needs to be scrapped out, so.
Oh, wow.
So we will, we'll be doing that and it will probably be ready for scrap by the time this happens anyway, so.
We get our ears out of these things.
So, yeah, I mean, and it makes sense. They're trying to get these vehicles off the road. They don't want to give you a grant to replace it so you could give it to another town and use.
And there's the match CIP.
Yeah. So, yeah, we were talking about using CIP ones for the, for the match on this and, and hopefully we get the eighty percent grant from those numbers. Flip, but, um, with that, we wanted to go ahead and accept this. So we had it, you know, on a motion on the books that we got this grant and then we will keep you advised if we get the other one or not.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll do it. Make a motion to authorize the town manager or the designee to accept the Granite State Clean Fleets VW Trust Fund and Grant of fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to offset the purchase price for the replacement of the two thousand and six plow truck and hereby authorize the town manager or the designees to take such action and execute all documents that may be necessary.
Second.
Oh, further discussion on the motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes unanimously.
Yes.
Down to award fuel, oil bid, and we should do them together, right?
Yes.
Okay, we had oil and propane on two separate lines, but they're together.
It'll be two motions more than likely, but I guess it doesn't have to be.
Well, yeah, I mean, so do you want to do the explanation? Or is, are you doing the explanation on this one?
I can do a little bit of it and then Jim can.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, you're right.
You have the, the numbers in front of you. Um, as requested, it's been a few years since we went out for RFP for fuel, oil and propane. So we went ahead and did that again this year. Um, we bid it in a way where it was rack price, rack price plus an amount.
Mm-hmm.
With that, we sent out seven bids. We received two of them back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and with that, you have the numbers in front of you on fuel, oil, Dead River, proposed, um, thirty-five point three five four one, so thirty-five cents per gallon over rack. And simple energy was sixty-five cents per gallon over rack. And then on propane, Dead River was point four nine per gallon over rack and simple energy was point three. We did put the caveat in the RFP that if we were to choose your company for both, was there any sort of a discount? And Dead River said they would give, um, propane price. Both heating oil and propane price would go down by point oh four cents per gallon. Um, I'll stop there and let Jim, let me explain his recommendations and some of the, the math that he did to, to come to this recommendation, so, Jim?
So, yeah, so basically, um, we sent those out and, uh, with what we got back, um, currently we are, um, Dead River customers. And so they're, you know, servicing our accounts. They have a good knowledge of, of what we need and what we, what we're buying and the volumes and the, the little things that, that make it tick, like, you know, Whitney Hall, when it gets below zero, needs to be serviced every third day. You know, some of those kinds of things. And so, um, pretty much a slam dunk on the oil. The, um, Dead River's a, a little higher on the propane, but I feel comfortable recommending them because the cost of changing i- is, is quite high because, um, we don't own all of our propane tanks. And the way those get swapped out is the propane that's in the tanks currently, which for Enfield is about just under four thousand gallons. That goes back at the price that it was paid for when the thing was filled. And right now, basically all of those tanks were filled at a lot lower price than it is right now. So the savings is going to be about fourteen hundred dollars going with simple energy on the propane, but that's quickly lost when you have to swap the tanks and, and send back, you know, thirty-eight hundred gallons of fuel a- at the lower price from a few years ago um, versus what we're paying now. So, so my recommendation is to, to stay with Dead River with both. And, um, I, I think we should also, as part of this process, maybe look at investing in propane tanks for all of our locations at some point. And then it would make it easier to do these sorts of bids because you wouldn't have that. We actually have a pump station right now that has, um, three full propane tanks from the early two thousand and tens. Um, when we were doing this almost annually, they would switch the tanks and someone would just pick up the full tank, set it off to the side, put theirs in, fill it. And so we've got to do something about that. Uh, Phil Neely has offered to, to help me get those declared a hazard so we can get those moved and pumped off and maybe get a credit on the fuel that's in them. So, anyway, so that's, that, that was our logic and, uh, and, um, but yeah, any questions, go ahead and ask.
Questions from the board?
Makes perfect sense.
No, it makes sense and Jim, you'll stay on top of the possibilities in the future of changing out those tanks for town-owned tanks. That would be great.
Yeah.
We'll do it.
Awesome, thank you, Jim. Um, if, if you're okay with it, then as printed, um, I think you could do a motion for, to accept the heating and propane price from Dead River. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Award, I'm sorry, yes, award. Someone want to make that motion?
I move that we accept both proposals offered by Dead River.
I will second that.
I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Jim, for the explanation. And to you, okay, we've got award insulation bid. The much anticipated. Uh oh.
Take this Jim.
Oh, Jim, you're back on.
Back on, yeah. So this is a project that sort of got short um or derailed during COVID. Um we had talked about doing a a fairly substantial um insulation project. Back in two thousand twenty, I believe. And um we had gone as far as getting, you know, some estimates and so forth and and got it approved at town meeting. But when we got sort of to the final bid stage, the vendors that were coming in were were um. You know, kind of looking at the project and saying, boy, you know, the 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 ceiling needs the insulation. But in order to do that, we're really gonna have to take down the the whole office that's over your heads right now. Which are suspended by cables to the beams at the top of the s- of the ceiling there. And um in order to do that, we'd have to vacate the building for three or four weeks and. That just wasn't feasible. And so we started looking at the best time to do the the ceiling insulation is in conjunction with uh, you know, replacing the roof. And the roof's been in in on the building for, I think, twenty years now. And my guess is probably it's got a twenty-five or thirty-year life. Um you know, we've had a little bit of leakage at the eaves, you can see, you know, at times and um. A lot of it's associated with the the large area and if we get a lot of ice, we have trouble up there. But anyway, so tha- that that became. The way to go with the ceiling part of it. And so uh we met with a couple of the energy committee members and Charlie Clark. Liam, the building inspector, and we started talking about, well, there's gotta be something we can do. So it was kind of decided that we were gonna put some insulation in the um exterior walls of the office space. That's where we really experienced people being very cold. Um Rob's office and Liam's office is in the front. Against the wall and and there's not a lot of insulation there. So the scope was put together to do that. And um we put out bids to or re- requests to, I think, seven or eight vendors around the state of New Hampshire and a couple in Vermont. To uh to look at it and unfortunately really got one company that was interested, but they did give us two bids for two different materials. And so the committee met um last week and we kind of reviewed those. And we thought it was best to go with the um the the upgrade on the material blown in. And then the company also gave us a a price to to put some board on the on the firewalls, which are all just block. Um a- and those, that would be in the upstairs, kind of in the what we call the mezzanine area, which is up over your heads there. Um there's two firewalls that block the the shops, uh the the bays, the garage bays from the office. And the board will go right up that. So between those two, it's, you know, maybe a third of what the original. Original scope was gonna look like. Um but I we think it's some low hanging fruit that tha- that will help out with some of the comfort and. Probably save some of the heating on the uh for for the building. So. That's tha- that's where we're at and. Again, um we're gonna get Liam up on the top of the roof to kind of give, look at the roof and see, you know, when the. The thing might need to be replaced and and start looking at, you know, getting that onto the to the capital improvements plan as a as a project, so.
All right, onto the board. So you have the proposals and explanation in your packet and potential motion? Do you wanna do a discussion? Someone wanna make a motion?
I mean, I think that's it's a pretty wise thing to do. I mean, I think we've been thinking about this for quite some time. So let's do it.
And this would come out of the funds that still remain in the. Was was a hundred and thirty, it's lower, it's less now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to award the bid for DPW insulation to Che insulation to blow in mineral wool insulation and to award. The add-on option of insulating the upstairs firewalls for a total cost of fifteen thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars. And hereby authorize the town manager or his designees to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes unanimously.
And thank you to those members of the energy committee for following up on that and.
Yes.
Are you aware of what we're actually doing or you just voted on it? You didn't know what we're doing?
I'm very.
Everybody understand?
I know what Rockwall is.
And I'm very aware of exactly what you're doing.
Okay, because I I I was, it was brought to my attention by our uh building inspector, Phil Neely. Who's sat in one of the coldest offices of building. Because there's a foot uh empty space between the outside wall of this metal building and the inside wall of the office buildings. And Phil asked at that time if there's something we could do. So uh to do liberty, we got an original inspection of the building. Which was a primary inspection and then we paid for its secondary evaluation, which came through with all the suggestions. One of the hardest thing to do, which nobody came up with a solution, is how to insulate up on the roof. And with our new building inspector, he pointed out that the best way to do that is when we replace the roof. But the space between the the outside and inside is gonna cut our cost probably in half.
Yep. And I will.
Thank you.
Tour after the meeting if anybody wants to see what we're doing.
I just, it blows my mind that we managed to build it without insulation, but you know.
They cut a lot of money out when they approved this building.
Yeah, I I brought it up to somebody that make sure that we don't do the same thing in any future building. Sometimes when you build cheap, you get exactly what you paid for.
Oh, absolutely. I think we know that uh with this. I just couldn't believe that insulation, it was an option not to insulate. Like, who knew that was a thing? Uh, thank you very much, though, gosh. Um, okay, we are on the Comcast broadband matching grant initiative program. Application of support and. You have as, no, in your packet, it's not as straightforward as just saying yes or no, so I'm gonna let Ed.
Yeah, and I'm I'm still learning, so we do have someone here that can talk to you a little bit better about this, but. I was contacted earlier in September by Comcast and really asked if we would support them on expanding. Putting in for this grant to expand broadband here. In fields. So of course, my pat answer is we will support any grant to expand broadband in Enfield. So we were reading through the the letter that we got to award that and one word caught our attention that we would. It said that we would support Comcast to be the supplier. And so I called Comcast and I didn't get anybody, so I called Andrea from Hub sixty-six because I knew they would no answer. And I talked to her and they were, they were planning on putting in for this BMGI grant only. And I did learn from her on Friday and then learned a little bit more today that um we can only support one supplier. Per address, if you will, or per address block. So we're not allowed to say, yeah, we're gonna support. I'm gonna use my street just because it's already served um Comcast to go down Algonquin and then we're gonna support Hub sixty-six too and see who gets the grant. We have to pick and choose which one we're gonna do, so um. I kind of like phone tag a little bit with Melissa Pierce from Comcast, but I did talk to Andrea and it looks like Michael's on. Unless Andrea logged in under Michael from Hub sixty-six. That can explain a little bit more. What Hub sixty-six plans were and this is the expansion that I had talked to you guys about. A month or so ago that they had plans to expand in Enfield and. They can, they can explain a little bit more what their plans are, where they're looking at going. And then we can have a discussion on who we wanna support and where we wanna support them and how we wanna support them and.
So can we only support one of these outfits?
I think so, and Michael may be able to to answer this better, but looking at the data that he showed with, you know, sixty-eight underserved. And two or three unserved, whatever that data was, it's, it's not a lot of people in Enfield that are under unserved. So you know, if one, if Hub sixty-six is planning on doing all of them. Then we have to make a decision if we're gonna support one or the other, so. Um Michael, did you? Talk about your project?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks for having me. Um yeah, this this project kind of came very fast. Um the state's been talking about this. Money they had allocated for a couple of years and then they kind of just threw this program together and gave everybody forty-five days to kind of make it happen, so. I apologize about how fast this is coming, you know, down the alley here, but I I can only speculate why they only chose um, you know, one provider per town. And I I have to imagine it's because a lot of the providers were fighting over the same towns on these previous grant applications. And maybe this was just a cleaner way for them to do it. Um but it did give the town the preference of at least choosing the provider they work with, whereas, you know, some. Some other providers got awarded towns that maybe the town wanted or didn't want. So whether this is a good idea or a bad idea, uh we can only speculate. But the way it works is um the town has to select the provider they're gonna partner with. And um we go apply for this matching funding. The town doesn't have to provide any funds on your side. So we provide all the funding to match whatever the state is going to provide up to a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent match. And um the goal of the state is to make sure every single, you know, house, residence or business in the state of New Hampshire. Has internet service by the time this is done. And they only have about twenty-five million dollars allocated right now. Um and hopefully they're gonna backfill this money with some additional bead money, um additional federal funding. Once this money is allocated so that we can keep continuing to try to reach some areas. I know we're partnering right now with the town of um. Cornish and Plainfield on this application and they have some driveways worth a mile long to get to a single house. So that's kind of, that's kind of the point of these um applications is to get to these people that otherwise would just never be, you know, never be serviced with high-speed internet. So um I know uh Ed talked a little bit about the houses that are unserved. The state did a a big map mapping initiative where they identified in every state. Or sorry, every town, the um the homes that are, they consider unserved or just don't have access to high-speed internet services. And Enfield is pretty low. I I think I heard you say something around sixty um. And then I think Andrea on our on my sheet I have here says fifty-four. And I know they identified a couple of homes that were incorrect that we already have high-speed internet service too. So it's about like fifty homes that are unserved right now. Fifty-four is what I have marked here. And our goal is to get every single one of them high-speed internet service into this program. Um most of them are kind of located around the Route eighty-nine corridor, um and some of those streets over there. And then the state identified a a few homes along Bog Road. So our goal under this would be to bring fiber optic internet down Bog Road. As well as some of these like offshoot roads off of the Route eighty-nine corridor there over near the mountain. Um Hub sixty-six currently services like most of the middle and east side of town and we're already. Actually starting to do construction down George Hill Road and Palmer Hill Road. We just started pulling those um applications with the pole owners. Um about a month ago or so, so we're gonna be starting to kind of fill the whole southeast part of Enfield as well. The only portion we currently don't service is like kind of like the Route four A um corridor that goes between Canaan and Lebanon. And um that's gonna be kind of our next next goal. We're applying for this money with Canaan as well and we hope to kind of fill the top part of Enfield. Uh under this next set of construction as well. So this specific grant will only really be this Bog Road Route eighty-nine area, just these areas where there's. Homes that were identified by the state. Um but we hope that as we finish this construction, we'll also fill the rest of the town and. Ultimately, um you know, Hub sixty-six would like to bring fiber everywhere, but it it's also good to have competition. We're glad that Comcast is available. And it gives us an opportunity to be competitive and try to offer people. Customer service or better pricing and all those competitive advantages that you have having multiple providers in town.
Uh I don't know if everyone had a chance to read the email that had some of the data in it. Do you have questions?
What do you have on Algonquin? Uh we have Hub sixty-six.
Is in Sub sixty-six finding of. The method of proposal as well?
Yes, and they're due this next Friday. So we don't have a lot of time. We need to decide if we're gonna support somebody.
And do you have any sense of what the value of the town's? Support is for a given proposal?
I do not, no.
We got two good service providers in town and.
I hear.
And.
I've heard a lot.
They're both gonna submit, they both, I haven't, I don't see a reason to pick one, I guess.
So if we don't, they can't submit.
We can only pick one.
So they both, so they're not, so they're not both submitting?
Only who we.
It's per.
So that's, okay, no, no, okay. So that's the die of the town.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's tremendous value in the town then.
Yeah, they both want to put in?
So and they can do it per, so say there was something Hub sixty-six, if I'm getting this right, wasn't gonna cover. Then Comcast would be allowed to submit for it-ish, right?
Like possibility, but it sounds like, and Michael, I know more of that. We may have to just pick up providers. But it sounds like if they're.
Yeah, so. The the scoring rubric that the state has is um kind of giving more weight to provider-town partnerships where. They're um they're grading us based on the number of unserved that are gonna be left out to this project. So our goal for Enfield is is gonna be zero homes left unserved. So when we're done this project here, there will be zero homes that have, that do not have access to high-speed internet.
I mean, I have a personal preference um towards working your Hub sixty-six and that we have them. Here physically, right? We've got a pretty. Long relationship with their predecessor and obviously are able to get ahold of them. I think for me, that's the big thing is. Being able to actively get ahold of someone, get them to listen to you and get them to work with you. I, I don't wanna speak, I I mean, I think you obviously have been able to talk to them. I have been able to personally talk with them. And when you get.
I can, I can talk with either, but I have heard from the community. That Hub sixty-six seems to be apparently responsive.
I I can speak from some personal experience. I recently had Hub sixty-six run about six hundred feet. Of of underground up to my residence. Um and I didn't like the way they did it. And I complained and they came back with two men and two dump trucks full of loam. And used my tractor with its bucket loader to help spread it out and they redid portions of it. And spread loam over it and grass seed. So I said, I know there's a company that's paying attention.
What did you have before Comcast?
Uh I had an old underground phone line.
Okay.
But with the fastest you could get on an old underground phone line.
Even imagine. So there's no internet to where I live except for a phone line until, and then. Um I previously had on the original fast roads, I had purchased a drive because they didn't complete it. And when Hub sixty-six came to town, they um the predecessor, Y Valley, had been quoted, had quoted our neighbor ten thousand dollars and then fourteen thousand dollars. And when Hub sixty-six was asked, there was no charge to install and when I went to switch, there was no charge. So I feel like. Um I I mean, that's my personal experience, but also I I it's been the same as John. Like you call, you talk to a real person. They come and they fix it. Uh sitting on hold with Comcast, having lived other places, I didn't have that experience.
That's true. They have real people answering the telephone.
Do we have a motion for this?
Go ahead, Dave.
I did not prepare one. I think we just need to make a motion to. Choose one if we want to.
Do you wanna make the motion and then I'll speak or?
No, you can.
No.
Since you're unmuted, go ahead.
I I I echo John and Kate's uh experience with that. Uh we uh uh had had some uh. Even though we live centrally on Maple Street, um we had had uh bad access uh um through Comcast. And on the recommendation of some people from the town and o- other community members um had switched to. Uh Hub sixty-six at a point where we were, I believe, on the the margin of where they had currently been. Um s- sending uh sending their their lines. Um they put it together very quickly. We, the 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 uh response has been incredible and the results um much, much better. So I I wish to, I I thank them and support them for uh i- if there's any competition between the two.
Comcast for the motion. They're most impressed. Well, there's your answer. Yeah, um.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, so it could be the select board for the town of Enfield makes a motion to endorse the application of, and I would put in the name of the one we want to use. To the New Hampshire Broadband Matching Grant Initiative, um BMGI to provide broadband service to unserved locations in the town of Enfields. In that, so we could do that and put the name that we choose. Yes?
Yep, that works. Can can we just use that last sentence? The select board for the town of Enfield hereby votes to select Hub sixty-six as agreed upon BMGI provider.
I don't know why that doesn't work.
It was really long, too. We're going for the short one. I like John. Are you making that as the motion?
I am.
Perfect.
I second that.
Good. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Michael, for coming with
Thank you.
Nation and for Ed for helping us.
So much. We'll, we'll probably, we'll, we'll probably be in touch because we've noticed that the um the state's been providing a lot of additional language and frequently ask questions around this um grant at the last minute. So we'll probably, Ed, we'll probably come back to you with just some some detail that'll need to be clarified in the next couple of weeks. Um, because I'm sure they're gonna ask for more information, but I I really appreciate everybody's support today.
Absolutely, and we'll get you the excerpt from the minutes as soon as we can.
And you can give us a discount if you want.
Thank you. We'll do. Thank you.
Okay, uh onward to, we have um an old home days committee resignation from Meredith Smith in our pocket. We need a motion on that, please.
Need to accept her resignation with gratitude and regrets.
All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, it passes unanimously. Okay, and then we have a cemetery trustee's resignation from Brian Dugan. I'll take a motion on that.
Could it be accepted with hilarity?
I hope you, I'll I'll move to accept Dugan's uh resignation with morbidity and regrets. He's a friend of mine.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I I wanna see the word morbidity in the minutes, by the way.
Uh, anybody who signs off as alive and loving it. Thanks, Brian. And and you know, it's not that we don't appreciate everyone's good work. Um, acceptance of donation of stream light portable scene lights to Enfield Fire Department in the value of one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars will entertain a motion.
I think this is great.
Yeah.
I move that uh we approve the acceptance of the stream light portable scene lights to the Enfield Fire Department in the some uh value of one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars.
Second, okay. Any discussion? I'd like to say that thanks to Joshua Wessels and the staff of All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed, abstentions, it passes unanimously. We have an acceptance of donations to the Community Nursing Trust Program Trust Fund. About two thousand dollars. Look at them go, bringing their total to forty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-five. They're really on
Very neat.
Do you wanna make that motion?
We had an Enfield TBO.
Oh, yeah.
I move we accept the donation, the Community Nursing Program Trust Fund in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Opposed, abstentions, it passes unanimously. Program, acceptance of donations to Mascoa Lakeside Park Trust Fund, five hundred dollars. Bringing their total to five hundred sixty thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. How do we get fifty percent?
I don't know, there's a lot of times when people make stock donations.
That's true, that's true. If it's a stock donation, I was like, must've missed this somewhere. Anyways, can we have a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to accept seven hundred dollars in donations for the Mascoa Lakeside Park Trust Fund.
I'll second that.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, I'm sorry, opposed, and sentience of passing unanimously. The, um, we have some administrative items uh in our pockets. Do you need a reconfirmation on the solar outlaw? We're just gonna sign. So we have a bunch of signing to do, and while we're doing our signatures, we're gonna take public comments.
We will just sign those exemptions.
Yep. That sounds good. Do we have any comments from the public here in front of us? Go ahead, Dan.
A person who's ETV eight, just to remember that Comcast gives us about seventy thousand dollars a year.
Yep.
Holding it out there.
We pay them the money that they give back to us. Let's remember that.
My golly.
Okay, um, other comments from the public present in front of us? Are there any comments? I'm so sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
I just wanna say how um how exciting it is that the infrastructure bill or the infrastructure program could so many millions of dollars for this community, you know, to get to those outreach areas and streets that don't have it. For people, for people to have infrastructure is is really life-changing. So that was very exciting. I didn't know that was in the works.
Definitely. Yeah. I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, do we have any comments from the public online? Going once, twice? Oh, Charlie, I'm so sorry, Charlie. I'm trying to do sign and I'm not doing my multitasking.
Well, um, I used to work for the power company, which I am not proud of, but I've I've been working with Liberty Utility to do something very simple and that's shut off some of the lights that stay on twenty-four seven for the last year. We've had lights on Shaker Boulevard that were out for six months with no service at all. Um, there are lights on Shaker Hill Road that's been on since May. There's lights in uh LePain Development that's been on It seems like, I told the power company, I don't mind the lights that stay on because we pay a flat rate. But the ones that aren't on that we're paying for, it should be something we should be able to do. And I told one of my neighbors, if I had a truck, I could take out the photo cells, which keeps the lights on and plug it into the ones that aren't working. But I think there's a problem with that with the uh doing that. So I would like for the town a- as a unit to push Liberty, which is like pushing a rope uh to to get something done.
Apparently, they're they're having trouble even sending out bills properly. Now, what can you say about a company that can't do billing?
Well, they can bill you wrong.
Well, I I could speak to that too, because there were months that DPW didn't get a bill from last year. And then Jim gets a bill for last year, for this year, and it came out of yet last year's budget. When you don't get a bill for months and then all of a sudden you get a bill for four thousand dollars for electricity. Uh, there's something wrong with Liberty. But the only thing I know that can correct that is the PUC. And uh it's, Liberty has been pushed for years on not doing things that other uh utilities do. They've been forced into doing things, some things now that they have never done before. So I I would like for the town as a unit to push Liberty. If there's some way to get the streetlights that we are paying for on.
But you're kind of on the side of it.
Yes, and so actually I want to just echo the frustration that I have diligently kept a spreadsheet of all of the reports of every outage that has been reported um because I track all of them. Um, and so I track the look closest house number and the pole number when things get reported. I have personally driven to polls to make sure that I have the pole number. I have called the Liberty Utilities. I have called back to ask if I could get an update, to which they say that they can't give me an update because and it's it's frustrating. I I have records of how many times I have called duplicate times for the same pole to try to get these things reported. So just uh, and I know that Mr. Clark has been in touch with me. He has tried to support that effort. I've been given names and contacts. I have sent the information that I have diligently collected to that contact and literally not heard back for months at a time, not knowing whether that person actually got my message or not. Um, which has also resulted in nothing changing. So if anybody has recommendations or ways that I can assist in that process, please let me know.
Can we invoice them?
No, I'm like, I'll invoice anybody.
As soon as we're going after electric companies. Free COVID. Somebody, one of the power companies, replaced all poles from Lock Haven down to Crystal Lake Road. The old poles still haven't been taken out yet.
And if you paid attention, they're working on it right now. I finally got a hold of the right person.
Thank you.
Days later, they were out there moving wire and cutting.
Okay, so there, there's also one on the corner of Hillsbury and Shaker Hill Road that I believe got taken out in an accident and the old one's still there and so is the new one.
We'll work on that. They did get the Dartmouth Lake Street subdivision that was being worked on. I drove up there because I was gonna push that one too and those have been replaced, so.
We have a good letter and a methodology for doing that. We've done before.
Well, yeah, because they can get fined for not taking them on.
Maybe liking the charge, everybody.
I finally got a hold of the right person.
And yeah. To the power company, uh this ye- this week on Shaker Hill Road, the old telephone lines were finally moved to the new u- utility poles for the power company.
There we go.
Now, in another six years, they might even remove the poles.
Right.
I'll be on, I got my contact.
Or they can get a fine. I think we can make it happen faster. Okay. So um in terms of, is there a way we can just, while you're doing contacts, drop a letter and a strong reminder?
Liberty?
Yeah, Emily has a spreadsheet. It would be like
Speak on the same thing, uh being, I work for the company. I I reported the pole number, location, and I called the office. And I was told that I can't report it because I don't own the poles. I said, you're damn straight, because they're owned, they are, they're owned by the utility. But then they said, I I had to let the town know. So I I let Alicia know, let the police department know that these pole numbers and stuff. So and and to say that Liberty is screwed up would be kind.
It hasn't always been this way.
No, I know.
I will say that like even, was it last year or the year before? Like I know there was one on LePain Circle where I called. And I did have to make one follow-up call, but after that follow-up call, it was done within, I think, two days. It was so
They did a corporate restructuring about a year and a half ago and that's what resulted in the problems.
The power company has a guy who works second shift. He's called Trouble Man. And part of his job is to work on streetlights, because he can do that alone at night. And I have not seen the Trouble Man in probably the last year.
That will be still in play or not?
Oh, my.
Well, I'm gonna be brave here, folks.
Go for it.
Motion to adjourn.
If you have a second, second, I call favor. I I'm not taking any
If, the way I read it, we have to renew that solar exemption every year.